Thank you, Larry. A review of the 22 meeting schedule. There's a motion later. What's that? Vote on the slate. 0 votes to adopt the slate from 2.2 to 2.6. No votes for Groves or Second. Second was reviewed and all in favor of I. 9 votes, no. So we will take action on this meeting schedule. Is there any question or comments about the meeting schedule? All right, moving on. Our comments are the same typically, but I will read them to you. We welcome you to our monthly meeting. We are here to accomplish the business of school for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens. And there is time for public comment prior to action items on the agenda. We ask that speakers identify themselves as their home district. We also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure our meeting is reasonable and lengthy. If you have more information than can be summarized in three minutes, please provide these high materials for the board to review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time has elapsed. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from a school board member or school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for comments. 0 votes to adopt the agenda for the seat. 1 vote for Ms. Bynum, 0 second. Second for Ms. Meyer, 8. All in favor of I? 9 opposed, no. So ordered. We have a new student liaison with us to see.
You do, and I am going to actually read the introduction of Mr. Stewart for this school activity tonight. We didn't set that along, so we wanted to be sure this got out there. So, Madam Superintendent, members of Rappahannock County School Board, Camden Shanks and her family, ladies and gentlemen, tonight I have the high honor and distinguished pleasure of providing remarks on behalf of Camden Shanks, our 2022 student representative of the Rappahannock County School Board. When I asked Camden to consider taking on the position of student representative to the board, she said no. I asked her again, and two days later, she said no again. I asked her a third time shortly before we were dismissed for the winter holidays. She asked me a question, "Out of all the students you interact with every day, why are you asking me?" A very good question indeed, and this was my reply. Camden, thank you. I see your talent, I see your work, I see you as a voice, I see your character to school and your fellow students. I'm going to keep asking you to say yes. She replied, okay, I'll do it. In my time knowing Camden, she has distinguished herself as a young woman of character, diligence, maturity, and with a commitment to continued scholarship and personal development. Camden has a heart for service and community, and still with all of her accomplishments and gifts, the thing that has impressed me the most in my conversations with her in the hall, in my office, or at a school event are that her values and morals are rooted in her faith. That is the source of strength that allows Camden to mount up her weight like eagles, to run and not be weary as a walk in ever pain. Camden, I leave you with this advice. The advice is in an excerpt from the poem "Pit" by Roger Pithling. If you can make thoughts your aim, if you can meet with triumph and disaster and treat those two imposters just the same, yours is the earth and everything that's in it. Camden, the earth is yours. You can do and be anything. You are enough. You are everything. And yes, I see you. Ladies and gentlemen, allow me to congratulate and introduce your 2022 student representative to the Rappahannock County School Board, Ms. Camden Shanks. Hello. Hello, Camden.
Camden, welcome. If you would like to, if any speaker would like to this evening, feel free to take the mask off so we can hear you better, but it's completely up to you. We have, you know, we can clean things up afterwards, so feel free.
Okay, thank you very much. Ask her twice. Okay, all right. Good evening. I am incredibly honored to accept this position as a student representative for this school year. You all have absolutely no idea how special this makes me feel and how much it really means to me. Not only, not only do I want to thank you all for accepting me, but I want to thank our principal, Mr. Stewart, who sadly not be here with us right now, though we do put him in our prayers just to make sure he is good and in his health and his loved ones too. And for listening, and also him for listening to what I ever had to say. There's honestly a million things I could say to express my gratitude and appreciation for how much I look forward to working by, by all of you and by your side. I have always thought that I would spend my high school years unnoticed until today. This day marks the beginning of a voice being heard. And now we shall start with our, our last big events where our Winter Wonderland Gala in December, sponsored by our Sheriff's Department and SCA. We also held a faculty versus student holiday volleyball game. Students won. Yay. In January, we are looking forward to our Pride Day on January 20th, our school holiday on January 17th, and more snow days. That is all I have for you. Thank you very much for listening. Great job, Camden.
Well done, Camden, and, and welcome. Now, just so you're aware, sometimes there's a board member that wants to ask a question, so you need to hang out for just a second. Does anybody have anything you want to ask Camden? Anything tonight? No assignments? I'm just kidding.
Camden is pretty well-known, I think, because we've seen her artwork throughout the years in the V SBA art contest, because she's usually one of the front artists that ends up there. And also, I remember Camden really standing out as an artist really from a young age. In fact, I remember walking down the hallway, in the third, third grade hallway in the elementary school, and there was little Camden drawing. I'm like, oh, isn't that cute? She's coloring, and I come, and she was not coloring. This girl was creating this incredible masterpiece that looked like a Picasso or something. I'm like, okay, she's really good. We need to really nurture this talent.
Thank you.
It's great to have you as a, awesome choice.
Welcome, and just so you know, most of the time, it, just because you're coming to a board meeting doesn't mean that we have you trapped here, right? You always have the excuse of, "I've got homework to do, I need to go home," whatever. You're welcome to be here as long or as short as you feel you need to be or want to be or can be, so, so know that. Two, we value having you here and speaking to us, but we also respect the fact you have a life, things to do, a young person. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Newman, donations?
Yes, I have two. A M E Excavating donated $500 for the FFA Adoptive Family. John Ves donated $200 for the FFA Adoptive Family. And then I also wanted to share with the board, we're going to put up on the screen the donations that we received for our holiday party. So if you would just like to turn around and just take a look, I'm not going to read every one, but we received a lot of donations from, from the community, for our, for our staff for our party. It was really nice.
That was a great party.
Yes.
It was.
A lot of ones.
All right, thank you, and we will accept those donations with thanks during our consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from December the 14th?
I move.
We have a motion, Mr. Rubin, is there a second? Second for Mr. Grove, is there any comment? All in favor of adopting them as they're presented? Let them, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. It's ordered. Mr. Grove, did you have opportunity to review the bills?
I did, and everything is in order. We're right, pretty close to right at the 50% where we should be, so that's the way it's supposed to be.
Well, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move.
We have a motion from Ms. Bynum, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Grove, is that Mr. Grove? That was Mr. Rubin. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's ordered. Dr. Grimsley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item under my reports are the highlights from the governor's proposed budget. Just pull up this presentation. All right, so we do have the initial state budget released by Governor Northam that was released on December 16th. And of course, these state revenues that we look at as we start to build our budget are the standards of quality, incentive programs, categorical funding, lottery-funded programs, and those are the basic building blocks. Then, of course, a major component is our local composite index, which we talk about a lot in preparation because of how high it is, even though the capacity for generating revenue in our county is not as it would appear to the state. So here are the revenue estimates based on what we have now. Now, remember, a lot can change. This is Governor Northam's budget. Governor Youngkin will be sworn in this weekend and then get some, a chance to revamp and revise the budget, so that'll be the next governor's budget iteration of the budget. That will have to revise these numbers as well, I'm sure, although Governor-elect Youngkin has already said that he is optimistic about the Governor Northam educational component of the budget anyway, so that's promising. So what we have here is a boost in the sales tax. You can see an increase there. I highlighted the major changes, so that you can see, but all of the numbers in the revenue, based on our baseline. Now, this isn't the finalized budgeted receipts that we've had in FY '22. We do November appropriations based on adjustments we make mid-year, grants we've gotten, reconciliation of federal funding. So this is baseline to baseline, where we started last year compared to now and what we have to build up to. So that was a major increase there. School construction, so this is brand new. There was a school modernization and infrastructure group that the governor had appointed to really look at this, and this is a big boost to schools where there's a minimum floor of $1 million for every school division at least, and then they apply a formula for the additional funding. So that will come in very, very handy to meet our CIP goals, so, capital improvement goals, so we're excited to see that. There's some hold harmless money in there for Rappahannock. So grocery tax, hold harmless, this budget does eliminate grocery tax, so it provides a hold harmless amount there. Usually that's a one-year stopgap that you have to plan for before the next, next year. Re-benchmarking, hold harmless, we got that 6750 right there, but at least it's something to generate revenue that we would have lost otherwise. And then there were some changes with special ed, supplemental, basic aid. These are just lines that we try to keep an eye on as much as possible.
Why'd that go down so much, do you know?
The special education, regional tuition is really based on our numbers that we utilize that program with, and the numbers have come down so much, similar to like the Virginia Preschool Initiative numbers generated directly from actual numbers utilizing the program. So the cost, it sort of is a wash anyway, so cost expenditure versus the revenue you would get from the program, so they revamped that based on the numbers of the utilization of that program.
That's the, is that, is that not the Falkir program, though, is it?
That's the one that we collaborate with.
Do we use it Falkir?
Right.
Okay.
Infrastructure and operations. See, we were worried when we saw the capital improvement fund come through, the school construction, and it's not just for new construction, it's for remodeling, and there's a lot of provisions in there that you have some flexibility with that money. We were worried about our infrastructure and operations funding that the state had given us with a floor of $200,000. That was protected as well in this budget, so $200,000 there, and that's what we plan to use hopefully to budget for our one bus per year program that we've been using, and then a couple other things in there, too. Okay. I touched this mouse a minute ago. All right, so this is our total state funds, 1.2, almost $1.3 million ahead of where we thought we would be.
So far.
So far, but a lot has to happen. So this is a good starting point, but it gives us at least a framework to begin our budget building. So we'll, that's the difference in what they've invested into education through our LCI and what Rappahannock would receive if this budget stayed as is, which it very rarely does from the start, but we'll see how it goes. Now, of course, federal funding also makes up the budget, so that's a portion. Projections right now are based on estimates from the previous year. We won't know our actual allocations from federal funds like Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, all of those Perkins, until usually August, so we build a budget based on, you know, our best guesstimates of what we'll receive. And then, of course, we have reconciliation of the budget that we usually do in about November, December timeframe, based on your summer receipts, end of fiscal year, and then what came in with federal funding. So these are your standard federal funds that we receive. Then we receive quite a bit of additional federal revenue based on the CARES Act initially and then the American Rescue Plan. So this is one slide that has those numbers here with FY '22 and what's projected for FY '23, which will be whatever's left of your ESER III funding. But we also just applied for additional federal ESER funding through the set-aside grants. The state of Virginia did have additional grant funding that you could apply for, competitive grants, so we did put in for three different sections for $452,000 for additional supports for learning, summer programming, a couple of the positions that we were hoping to keep going a little bit longer, like transitions and specialists and things like that. This is a perfect use of that money, so it's been approved up through the state through Level 5, but I won't know officially if it's, how much we're getting as far as the allocation at the state level until they let us know, hopefully in the next couple weeks or so. Other revenue sources, grants, of course, we do the best we can to be as creative as we can to write a lot of grants and bring in some extra funding to enhance the experience of education here, especially a focus on wellness recently in recent years, so that's been quite a bit. This year, we saw the return of the safety grant, which we haven't been approved for for, I think, like five years, six years now, but we apply every year and hope we get something, so $25,000 this year, so. So here's just a rough projected revenue summary, and there's a lot of TBDs because we won't know yet, but this is where we start.
Let me ask you a question. Why do we have the Fed as a negative? We don't know what it's going to be.
It's not a negative, I'm sorry, approximately. It's an approximation, not a negative, it's a squishy, so. It's approximately that because we don't have, we don't have.
Oh, it is, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
This looks like a flat line to me.
Oh, it's an increase. We're projecting an increase of 628, I'm going to figure in those other pieces, so.
I got it, okay, thank you.
Other variables that are going to affect this, health insurance, of course, we're not going to know that for a little while. Now, remember, we haven't had a health insurance increase in five years. In fact, we've had, the last two years, had a decrease. I don't anticipate seeing that in the next few years or so, just because of, there's been a lot of sicknesses and we've had some babies and we had some serious illnesses, too, that we've probably brought our pool up, so I anticipate there's going to be an increase there. We're going to budget for 8%, just to be safe and hope it comes down lower, but that's what we'll use. Of course, Governor Youngkin's budget revisions, we don't know what those are going to look like yet. Then, of course, the General Assembly Finance Committee gets a hold of that budget and gets to go back and forth on what they would like to amend. We have staff intent to return forms that'll go out this month, here in the next week or so, week or two, and we'll see the percentage of the staff that intend to return. I have not heard about many retirements, so that's a good thing, retaining staff is always good. But of course, I haven't gotten those forms back yet, that's just from what I'm hearing on the ground. Actual allocations that come in for state and federal funding, of course, later after we're long done with this budget process. And then your actual ADM and fall enrollment, we'll, we'll understand that better, and then March 31st is the number they will project their final revenue out from. And then, of course, COVID relief funds, a lot can happen with those and the allocation of how the feds and the state allocate that to school divisions. Our budget priorities so far that have been identified are, of course, support the comprehensive planning goals that are being developed at this time. Amelioration of COVID impacts continuing, that's going to be probably a four or five year process, to be sure that we're ameliorating those impacts. Teacher-staff compensation remain at the top of the list of priorities, continuing with the high school academy models. Capital improvements, so those are the ones that admin try to keep at the top of the radar. And then, of course, we have the budget survey that was released for the community to take, so we'd like to hear from the community about what their priorities are in the school budget. And then the school board, after you've digested the revenues and can look at everything, and we will provide the survey data to you, you can also let us know what the school board priorities are in the budget, where you'd like the direction of staff to go in as, as we develop the budget. And that work session will be January 18th at 6:30 at the school board office.
School board office, yep, yep.
School board office. And that's it.
Was there, was the, did, was there already an initial projection of the goal for teacher salaries increases?
Yes, oh, I should have said that, I'm sorry. So the, in the governor's budget, the compensation supplement assumes another 5% increase in the first year of the biennium and a 5% in the second year, so a 10% over two years.
That's only, only SOQ staff, right?
SOQ.
SOQ staff.
Which is pretty much everyone by the time you break it down, so.
Over two, that's more than we've done.
I, we did 5% last year.
Okay.
And the compensation supplement, they did hold, so that's, that's good. We'll get some money toward it, but nowhere near what it cost.
Yeah.
But it's yet to be seen whether or not that mandate's going to stick, but we'll, we'll see what we can do.
All right. Are there any other questions? On this, we did, so on this page that talks about the COVID money?
Uh huh.
There was money that we had committed, you know, a gentleman's handshake committed to supervisors?
Yes.
Right, which part is that coming from here?
ESER III.
It's ESER III?
Yep, and I noticed a mistake on this slide, I apologize.
And what?
It's 1.1.
What had we, what number did we give them? Wasn't it like 400K or something?
Almost 400,000, 390, and that was based on mapping GIS of our families that had unreliable internet, and that is the only allowable permissible use of those funds to support broadband expansion.
Right. But that still stands.
Yeah.
Yep. All right.
Unless they want to give it back.
I'm sure they'll.
I don't think that'll happen.
Sure they'll need it.
I would not object.
Need our fair share.
No, we support it. That initiative is so important for our families, so. All right, if there's no other questions about budget, or is it okay to move on to our well check? Okay, so this month's well check will be one up here. It's coming. There we go. All right, so just a quick review of our COVID dashboard. This is November's numbers. How we looked in December, looking good going into winter break. And our first dashboard that we actually released was Monday after kids have gotten back into school, really only one, one day, two days on Monday, but this is where we are right now. We did anticipate a little bit of an increase, you know, based on what we're seeing with Omicron, and I'll talk more about that in a minute, but also anytime you have kids at home for long periods of time, especially over holidays where everyone's gathering and going all over and traveling, you would anticipate to see a rise in cases. So I do anticipate that we'll continue to see that probably for the next two weeks or so until this peaks, but we're going to continue to be very careful. Here's our numbers overall since August 25th, since we started the dashboard. Virginia State data shows a pretty large spike here. Rappahannock locality data following a pretty similar pattern, not as sharp as the state data, but still a pretty striking increase. Of course, everyone's still in the red from our Rappahannock Rapid Inn Health District Community Transmission data. Now, these slides are from our, from Dr. Green, so I thought I'd share those with you. They're actually pretty informative. So they've been studying Omicron across, from South Africa, the UK, Florida, and how its, its patterns. So as you can see here, the top graph is the case rates and the bottom graph is the death rates. So as we saw with Delta in South Africa, kind of a similar pattern. The increase in deaths were pretty consistent with the increase in case numbers. With Omicron, there's a very, very sharp increase in cases, but the death rate stays very, very low. That's what they're seeing there. In the UK, very similar pattern. And then Florida, they're seeing the same thing, even though it hasn't spiked yet, it's almost, which is kind of bizarre in Florida, it's almost non-existent with the death rate, but the cases rose up as far as this chart and from what Dr. Green provided. And then Virginia seems to be following very closely the similar pattern. So what he was observing there was that although case rates go up in vast amounts, luckily, that this variant does not appear as severe, which is the good news. He said, "That's the good news in this, but there's some problematic pieces, too." So he said, "This is one slide that's baffling the health districts because the case rates are so high in like the Northern Virginia vicinity and areas where, you know, they, they did so much attention to high vaccination rates and masking and everything." So he did say, "This seemed to do the opposite of what they expected in Omicron," so there's a lot of studying that still needs to be done there. So what he said, Omicron, Omicron new case rates rise very, very rapidly. It's very, very highly contagious, even more so than Delta. South Africa, only one month after the rapid rise, it was followed by a very rapid drop, which is also the positive part of that, and presently down to about 35% already of the recent peak, from what they're studying. So that's a hopeful, hopeful scenario. UK and Florida may be near their peaks at this point, it's looking that way, and Virginia, which started a little later, it hasn't peaked yet, but it appears to be following the same, very same pattern. So death rate increases have been proportionally much less, South Africa, UK, and Virginia, and have not been seen in Florida, consistent with Omicron causing milder disease. The data is still early and still needs to be watched, but hospitalization rates are way, 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 way up in Virginia because of those high case numbers. So this is a neat slide that Dr. Feig showed us from the Valley Health Systems. He's the vice president and public health coordinator there. So basically, it's just a, he explained it in math terms, which I kind of like that sometimes because it's a logarithmic function rather than a linear, that's why you see the parabolic relationship. So even though the rates are so much lower with the vast sheer numbers, that's going to drive up your numbers based on how many you're seeing. Their outpatient rates are higher than they've ever been. Hospitalizations are up, even though the rate at which they are, but because of the sheer numbers of those that are contracting it, those, the number of people that need to be seen are really high. So they're really struggling. The healthcare systems are really, really struggling right now.
We had to wait an hour and 20 minutes to get somebody into the emergency room the other day, yesterday.
That's actually a lot, a short wait time, because a lot of people I've talked to said six, seven hours.
Yeah, and today wasn't.
I mean, this was, this was a rescue squad, this wasn't a lock-in people.
Woo.
And today wasn't a state of emergency declared based on hospitalization rates in Virginia right now?
Right, to improve the licensed number of beds that could be offered at the hospital settings, so that'll hopefully open up some more capacity.
And to be fair, a lot of that has to do with staffing.
It does, it really does, yeah. So that's, and I do have a letter from Dr. Feig that I provided as well, that he wanted to share with the, the school boards across the region, just to say, "I know things may change next week based on what's coming up," change next week based on what's coming up," and even our public health coordinator is just urging us to just hold tight with mitigation, let us get through this surge and then do whatever you want to do, but please let us, because we can't serve your community if that's not held steady as much as you can. So, and I thought that was important, but we've already, and I even spoke up in that meeting and said, "Well, Rapidhanic already said we're not really going to change anything until February anyway, and then look at numbers and see in March kind of where we're heading." So, so that's a good thing, as far as mitigation protocols. But, CDC, let's talk about quarantines. So there's been a new shift in guidance from the 10-day quarantine to the five-day, which is actually something we've supported from the beginning, saying to reduce that time or not do it at all for healthy kids and healthy staff members in certain situations. So these are the updated guidance in summary, that if you've been exposed, you're up to date on your vaccination, or if you've had COVID-19 in the last 90 days, you don't need to quarantine at all if exposed. You have to wear a mask for the next 10 days, monitor for symptoms, and test only if symptoms start. Okay? If you're exposed and not up to date on your vaccinations, you should quarantine for five days, and your exposure day is the day zero. Take precautions for the entire 10 days, wear your mask the whole 10 days, monitor for your symptoms for those 10 days, and if test is available, test on day five.
We have tests available.
So, that's another problem. We, we gave out quite a bit before holiday break, I ordered 1,200, I received 75, and those 75 were expiring on December 31st. So I did place another order, and hopefully they will get here, you know, very soon. We've also requested through the State Department, Health Department, and.
Have you contacted Sean?
Yeah, and he knows we need, we need some too, but.
He had a case of them the other day.
Yeah, we're, we haven't had to use them yet, but we anticipate that a lot of people are going to want to test, so we're working on that, but also with our Valley Health Clinic, we're trying to reserve the test kits, home test kits we have for staffing. That's going to be a critical area if, if this thing does go through, so we want, we want that for more adults if we can, and the Valley Health Clinic should be opening very, very soon. And if, even if it's not fully operational, Valley Health is helping us trying to get more tests available and testing there for the kids, so. Coming along on that. So if you're positive for COVID-19, it says quarantine and isolate for five days after symptoms appear. First day of symptoms is day zero, and you can come to work after day five if you're fever-free for at least 24 hours. Our nurses would like 48 hours fever-free. Symptoms improving, they have to be improving, you can't be getting worse or sounding the same, it has to be getting much better, and you have to wear that mask for a full 10 days. So those are the new updated quarantine guidance protocols, and they've been supported at this point by BDH and also the Department of Education, especially for school settings, so. Yes, sir.
How do you define symptoms improving?
So if on day two you had horrible body aches, a bad fever, and day five, those are all gone, and you're not sounding horrible, and you're feeling better, they say that's improving. But if you still feel horrible and.
But no fever?
No fever, and we, when we've talked about this, no fever for at least 48 hours. We want that two-day period, especially if it's a confirmed positive. So, and I will say, our school nurses and our NCIS team are very thorough, and they work very closely with BDH, and we do case by case on this, we're small enough that every case is examined thoroughly. There's different types of close contact and exposure. Were you at a concert? Did you share a drink with somebody? Did you do that, or was it an at-school exposure? Okay, so they're treated a little bit differently depending on the situation and the likelihood that that will then turn into COVID or symptoms will appear. So we're going to try that and see, see how that works, but that's the recommendation at this time from all the agencies, they're aligned on that. But your quarantine period can be extended at any time, they monitor each case if symptoms get worse, if you develop symptoms after exposure, then of course, that's extended for the full time. But that should help.
Can I ask one more question?
Yep.
Maybe I missed it someplace. If you, if you tested positive, then after five days and your symptoms have improved, would it not make sense to do a test at that time?
You can.
Would it not make sense for us to say you need to do a test?
What if they were available?
It's going to be positive, right?
Pardon?
It's still going to be positive.
Yeah, they'll still test positive for a while.
Not necessarily.
They don't recommend that.
According to my doctor, you can test positive for like three to four months.
Okay.
Yeah. And also the availability, we're really trying to reserve those for symptomatic people, just trying to test, like the test-to-stay program sounds great, but the volume of testing you would have to do to try to make that logistically possible, you need, you need a lot of supply. And now that everybody's jumping on that and trying to do, they aren't there. So trying to reserve that for people who have been exposed and starting symptoms, that's where we need to test to make sure we're isolating and really making sure that, that gets, that gets the most importance.
So, so you had, so these past, these last two slides, we're assuming that everybody is wearing a mask past day 10 if we still have our current mitigation practices?
Oh, sure, yes, yes. So this assumes universal masking, our safety plan hasn't changed in that sense. So all school mitigation is still in place the way it was, so universal masking is still there, which we had already talked about last meeting, that let's just keep everything status quo and watch the winter surge, because, you know, the way I explain the mask, regardless of what you believe about transmission, mathematics will make it so I can't keep you at work or people in school. Just on the, and the, how contagious this one is, that's going to be really difficult. So holding steady is the, the right thing to do to keep the most kids in school the longest. So we'll do that through February and then bring new data in March to see where we're going to go forward the rest of the year, and by then, this surge should be done from all indications, so let's hope that's the case in, in there.
Okay. Sounds like a good plan.
Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Grisler.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to reports, more representatives headwaters? Representative?
Yes, I do have a report. I didn't meet in person with Brittany, but we have been in communication. And, yeah, the first is they're getting rolling with after-school today, was the first day. There are 62 enrolled, which is just about the limit of how many people they can, they can serve, so that continues to be a very popular program.
Yeah.
And scholarship applications are now being accepted for the many Headwaters scholarships that are offered. It's, Brittany met with seniors in December to outline all of the criteria and how to do a good application that might get them, earn them some money, so that was a good step to hear about. And there are two new scholarships available through Headwaters. There's a RAP scholarship through our arts, our arts nonprofit, that's for a student pursuing careers in the arts, and there's a Principal Swindler Scholarship as well. So that's exciting to see the number of scholarships and types of scholarships expanding. Headwaters RAP writing interns, Luke Ellis and Ava Geno, are continuing to write, and their articles are being featured monthly in the Rapidhanic News and the MadRap Recorder. And the Starship, the Starfish Mentoring Program, they have several trained mentors that are all trained up but still waiting to be paired with the mentees, so that's a great, a great direction to be going, to have more trained mentors in the works. The educational enrichment grants are also available to teachers on an ongoing basis, and this year, Headwaters has funded projects that include a Spanish culinary workshop at the high school, and funding for two teachers at the elementary school to bolster their skills in literacy, literacy instruction, and also a Shakespeare language workshop that was for a group of 10th to 12th graders at the high school. Good, good extras being funded, thank you.
All right, thank you. MBGS report?
Yeah, we actually meet next week, but there is a prospective student-parent meeting, it's going to be a Zoom meeting on Tuesday, January 25th, and I'll, I'll give you the information, maybe we can put it up on our website for prospective parents and students. It's going to be Zoom only this year.
Thank you. Moving on to 7.1, the VSB A Code of Conduct. So each year, we have this code of conduct that we, we write our names and sign. It's, this is the now behave yourself letter, right? And we'll vote on this, pass it around, and sign it later. But I think everybody's had a chance to see this, have you or have you not? Yes? And our statements of economic interest are due this month, right? During the month of January? Right, so if you haven't done that already, if you could get that to our clerk. All right. At this time, we move on to public comment. If you'd like to address the board this evening, would you please come to the podium and take off your mask unless your nose is cold and you don't want to do that? It's a cold room tonight. Anybody wants to address the board tonight? Also, in our agenda, we have opportunity, if anybody wants to address the board specifically about the budget, you have opportunity to do that. Is there anybody online?
Yes, there are.
That might want to speak to us this evening?
Anyone on Zoom would like to address the board? You can raise your hand. Mr. Chairman, I see none.
And is anyone that want to address the board on the budget this evening? No? All right, moving on to action items, is there a motion to approve the 2022 meeting calendar?
Go move.
We have a motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second room is Bynum. Any discussion?
It'll be at the school board office, right?
The work session?
The work session.
So on the 18th, which is next Tuesday, we have a work session already. All right, all in favor? Aye? Aye, opposed, no? It's ordered, approval of our new student leaves on Camden. Shanks?
Go move.
We have a motion from Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ubin?
Yeah, Mr. Ubin. I can't tell anymore, I don't know. Oh, it's all muffled with the mask, sorry. Mr. Ubin made the motion, is, and I think Ms. Bynum seconded that. All in favor? Aye? Aye, opposed, no? Of course not. And a motion that we adopt and approve the VSB A Code of Conduct.
Go move.
A motion from Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second room is Marv. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed, no? And the motion carries. Our next regularly scheduled school board meeting is, and I forgot the look.
February 8th.
February 8th. And are we going to do that in here? Is it, this is not the joint one? This is the joint one.
Yes, it is, yeah.
So we had discussed moving this to the elementary because we'll have more room, right? So that will be our plan with this, we would change the location of this meeting to have more room, because both boards are going to be attending and we can spread out a little better.
February.
Or February meeting. So that, that meeting, if you remember, we start out joint, and then eventually the supervisor, the joint part of the meeting kind of disbands, and we finish our regular business that night afterwards. So that's that. The work session on the 18th, the school board is planned, and a retreat for the school board on the 29th of January in the morning, that's a Saturday.
AM.
Nine to noon, I think was our plan, and we have a facilitator, grant-funded, who's coming from VSB A to help us do that, and our, our task for the morning will be, as a board, to get our hands around goals so that we can give information to the, to the people working on the comprehensive plan and make sure that those things are folded in. So that, that's our task for the morning. On the 21st of January, in the morning, the SIFT leadership team from the SIFT School Innovative Finance Task Force will be meeting again to discuss that final product that we're trying to get briefed and in front of the joint meeting in, in February, right?
Yes.
So our goal is to present that information, and hopefully we'll get it out early enough so that you can review it before you get there. And I think that's, we're going to be meeting doubt by the time we get to February, all right?
Seriously.
So I think that's it, unless there's something else there. Is there any other new business? Anybody? At this time, we're going to move into closed session.
I move the board convene into closed session for a following purpose, to discuss and consider the appointment of staff for professional positions and a classified position pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a second, Mr. Ubin, all in favor? Aye? Aye, opposed, no? It's ordered, so we're going to be, it's going to take us longer to get into the room and get back out here than we're going to be gone, all right? So I would say we're going to be gone for five minutes by the time we are able to get seated again, in case you wanted to hang out. All right? Be right back.